Good evening. I will call the December Common Council Meeting to order. All other persons are present. Thank you all for being here and welcome to those joining in the audience or joining from the comfort of their home watching on TV. We'll move into item three. It's the Presentation of the Colors by the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department. Honor guard.
And will faithfully discharge
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Item number six on our agenda this evening is a reading of the minutes of the previous regular council meeting of November 21st, 2017. Council members, what are your wishes regarding those minutes?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Dolan. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing no request to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item number seven is a reading of the minutes of the previous special council meeting of December 5th, 2017. Attachment number two in your packets. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Also make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Zerflu and a second by Kellogg. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Alderperson Rayom, you're first.
Wanted to make sure I had the right one. This was the North Point development, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it up. I had meant to vote no at that meeting. I had ended up with a yes vote, and I know I can't change it, but I just want to bring it up to the record. I meant to vote no that night, so.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure I had the right meeting. That's what took a minute here.
Sure, no problem. Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item number eight is the explanation of the visitor speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so after being acknowledged by a council member, in which they'll be allowed to speak for no more than five minutes, and the comments must be limited to items appearing before us on our agenda this evening. Item number nine is my report. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here who are watching from home. The Mayor's Youth Council has continued their work on the zoo project, the master plan project of which we've been working the last couple of months on, and they've been spending some time researching other municipal zoos around Wisconsin since they last met. They do plan on presenting their thoughts to the park and rec in the coming months. Commission, they also, the group is also preparing some smaller winter projects with some aquatics fundraising assistance to groups that have requested presentations of the city and also their fundraising competition that they issued themselves earlier this year. After a very successful Christmas tree walk hosted in part by the Mayor's Beautification Council as well as the Southwood County Historical Museum, the group will be meeting in January to discuss the 2018 projects. The Kissing Balls is a project of the Beautification Council, again, fully sponsored by community members. I believe there's over 60 hung up in the east side of the downtown area, which adds a little bit of extra holiday charm to our city. On downtown developments, we met with Gorman and a few prospective tenants on the 13th of this month. Individuals that have come forward expressing interest to occupy or explore the commercial space of the building, and I'm pleased to say that we've identified more folks than I think we were expecting earlier on, so we're going to continue to discuss the project with Gorman. We will have them under contract for the rest of the year, the rest of 2017, and it's likely that we'll be coming forward with a concept and a perspective rendering in January. The Planning Commission continues its work on the zoning rewrite project, which is also in our minutes tonight. On the Rapids Mall, it's been now made public and that the purchase of the mall by the YMCA has, the transaction has closed and concluded. The city continues to work with a few of the tenants that have expressed an interest to relocate throughout the community but are struggling to find an appropriate fit, so we continue to discuss with those. On the North Point development, that was approved, or that was, yeah, that was approved at the special council meeting, while the development formally stays paused until the award of the tax credit is either successful or not, but we did have, I did issue some communication both to the YMCA, the Legacy Foundation, and Encourage indicating that the site plan was merely a concept and we will continue to work with them while the parties be to ensure that the parking needs are fit, and if they are not, then ultimately we may have to take that project in a different direction. Want to mention, too, that city newsletter, first city newsletter went out in the mail about a week ago, staged over a couple of days. We did find that there were a couple of mail routes in the city that were primarily in the Tonner Grand Rapids, so you may have residents that didn't get this nice communication, and it's due to the fact that we didn't want to distribute it in large part outside the city, so there are a couple of routes. We're going to have to figure out how to improvise on that for the next time around if we continue that project. Tended the QuickTrip grand opening, in which the owners of QuickTrip were in Wisconsin Rapids and expressed great appreciation to the city for working with them on that project. I think as I've found in hearing from people in the community that people are very pleased to have that at the corner of Lincoln and the expressway, so further traffic counts will continue throughout the winter, and should there be any further improvements to that intersection, those will be discussed following the completion of that traffic audit throughout the winter months. And that concludes my report. Item number 10, a presentation from the Southwood County YMCA regarding urban day camp program. I understand Matt's in the back of the audience here. Come on forward, Matt, stepping in for Brett this evening. Come to the podium if you would be so kind, and at the bottom of the microphone, there's a button that says "push." If you could do that and make sure the light's green so we can hear you.
Well, I believe I have made just enough copies. I made 15 copies to give it to everyone here tonight, so, but I need one myself, so someone might be short, but let me just, if you could.
Adam.
Sure, hang on a second.
My name is Matt Sikolski. I'm the Program Operations Director at the Southwood County YMCA, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Brett Solschneider, who could not make it. He has a prior engagement doing some things with some new employees at our YMCA. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief overview of the partnership between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and the Southwood County YMCA. This past year, we offered a unique camping experience to families and kids primarily from the community where Mead Elementary School is located, and this was our second collaboration with the city to offer a unique summer experience for these kids. The previous year was called the Urban Day Camp, and to give you a little background, and perhaps some of you can elaborate it further, is we partnered with the city that had closed the pool, the Mead Pool. So the funds that were used for that project was available to partner with us to provide and subsidize families in that Mead area to provide, again, a camping experience. Really, an incredible deal we're talking about for families that were on free and reduced lunch. A week of camp costs $20, and for families that were not on the free and reduced lunch, it would be $40. Really, that happened on the fact that the city was so generous to make this happen. So this past year, I have some data that I can share with you. We had a total number of 93 campers who were part of the Summer Club program, and we had also 57 kids at our Camp Alexander, Summer Day Camp. That's our campground located near Nepco Lake. So as a total, we had 93 campers. 36 were at a program at our Port Edwards facility, and as I mentioned before, 57 were at Camp Alexander. 100% of those campers were from Mead School. We had reached out to families from Mead and from Hall School, but 100% of our campers this past year are from Mead School. 50 campers were unduplicated, which means we had 20 campers that were just part of the camp for one week, and the rest of the campers, the 73 campers, signed up for more than four weeks of camp. The average age of the students ranged from age 6 to 11, with the majority of the kids being eight years of age. 93% of the children attending were on free and reduced lunch program. 54% of the campers received swim lessons at Camp Alexander, which was kind of a great thing. So the financial cost breakdown of this was a total of $10,891.43. Again, we had 51 kids on the free and reduced lunch program, and there's a breakdown. I won't add in detail. 36 participants that were part of the Summer Club program at Port Edwards, and then also there was a transportation fee that we provided to the families as well. I know the mayor had asked for some testimonials from some families that were part of the program. I did the best job I could, and it's tough to get people to come up and, I guess, speak and, for public speaking, so what I did is I had on the second page some written testimonials I'd like to share with you. If you look at the bottom paragraph, this was a kid by the name of Archer who was in the Summer Club program at Port Edwards, and this is what his mother had indicated about his experience. Going into the summer, Archer was an extremely shy and self-conscious boy who we've always had the struggle of integrating him with other kids and activities outside of our home. At first, he was extremely apprehensive of going to the Summer Club program at the Port Edwards facility, but I must admit, the lead teachers, Diane and Dawn, and the rest of the staff were absolutely outstanding. By the middle of the summer, when we didn't register for a particular week, Archer would beg us to bring him to the Y and Summer Club so he could be with his friends. His favorite activities were games that took place outside, including dodgeball, and he enjoyed the swimming that was offered during his time at Port Edwards. We noticed a significant difference in improvement in Archer's self-confidence by the end of the summer. Thank you. Ultimate summer experience. Now, the top paragraph was a testimonial by a young boy named Ben, and I had the opportunity to meet Ben on one of the field trips that the kids took in August. This was a unique situation because Ben doesn't have any parents, and what I mean by that, the parents aren't of this world anymore, so if you can really imagine that, kind of hard to fathom. So this was a six-year-old kid who lives with his grandmother, and the person who brought Ben to camp was his aunt. That's what he called. It wasn't a blood-related relative, it was a family friend, and this is what she had indicated what the experience meant for Ben. Ben has had a wonderful time at the ultimate summer experience camp. He has attended many new things, pardon me, he has attempted many new things and improved on his attachment issues. He is now more willing instead of to try something different. He is now showing his ability to be less shy. He has become more independent instead of relying on adult direction constantly. He has shown great improvements with the help of camp. He said he liked camping and paddle bowling the best. In the first paragraph, I have a testimonial from our camp director, Doug Wickersham. If you read that, it really indicates what that experience meant for this family. So it is my understanding after speaking with Brett that it doesn't look like we'll be doing this program with the city this coming summer. I was part of this camp, did a lot of the recruitment at Mead School and at Hall Elementary School, and I think everyone should feel good tonight about the work that was done, primarily with the kid I was just telling you about. And throughout my career at the YMCA, I remember one person I'd mentioned that really can't understand the impact you make because it is so far-reaching. So with these kids that went to the camp, they'll probably never know the impact it had, but I think just to the benefit of the community, you can't debate the fact that if we have strong kids, it just makes, they're our future leaders. It just makes the community a better place to be. So I'll be happy to take this time to answer any questions that you all have.
Alderperson Kellogg, you're first.
This is one of the concerns I had. I believe the camp is beneficial, but I appreciate your report. I think it's important for us when we allocate funds, taxpayers' funds, to different programs that we get a report back as to the impact and the segregated data, and I want to thank you for taking the time to create this report and being here this evening. Thank you.
You're welcome, Scott.
Other requests to speak or questions? All right. Well, Matt, thank you very much for the presentation and for the written report as well, and we'll file it with the information.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, too. Okay. Item number 11 on our agenda this evening is my report, my appointments to the 2018-2019 Election Board, attachment number three, which I'll allow the clerk to explain since technically they're not my appointments.
Okay, so you have the list of names in front of you. The Wisconsin Elections Commission actually sent out, they met with the state parties this year, and elections are supposed to be staffed by card-carrying members of county parties. So in Rapids, we can use any county resident for the City of Wisconsin Rapids elections. So those county parties were instructed to get a list of names to the respective clerks' offices of the various municipalities in the state by November 30th. However, they did not have to, and neither of the Wood County parties submitted me workers' lists, although I did have contact with both of them. So the list before you is just the pool of workers that we have been using, all are veterans, and just as a side note, if you know anyone who might be interested in working elections, we're always seeking new workers. It's a great way to become civically engaged, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Alderpersons, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Kubaszek. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. Any discussion on the item? Motion is to approve. See no request to speak. Please cast your ballots. City Garage. Probably where they come from.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Motion carried.
Item number 12, new business. Item A, consider an ordinance amending Section 27.13 Parent 1 Parent D of the Municipal Code, modifying the location of a taxi cab pickup and delivery on West Grand Avenue at Second Avenue, as recommended by the Public Works Committee at their meeting on December 5th, 2017. The ordinance is in attachment number four. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Dolan. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Any discussion or request to speak on that item? See no request to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 12, under new business. Item B is consider an ordinance amending Section 340.005 Parent 3 Parent B of the Municipal Code, adding a left turns restriction on Prospect Street at 8th Street, as recommended by the Public Works Committee at their meeting on December 5th, 2017. See the ordinance, attachment number five in your packets. Alderpersons, what are your wishes on that item? We have a motion to approve by Rayom. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg? Any discussion, request to speak on that item? See no request to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 13, the Planning Commission and 14 meetings, the 20th and the 11th of December. Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on November 20th, 2017, in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhardt, Joe Terry, and Alderperson Todd Furkey. Members absent were Fran, Aaron, Lee Tao, and Tim Burkhauser. Others in attendance included Adam Taggann, Charlie Handy, and Tim Schwacki of Civitec. The meeting was called order at 4:00 PM. Item 1 is an update and discussion on the zoning rewrite project with Civitec. The commission reviewed drafts of Appendix C and Article 7 building types, revisited the land use matrix to determine which districts, in what districts uses should be permitted, conditional uses or not permitted. Additional items were discussed to clarify the direction of the commission's wishes to go on larger policy issues, and a review on how the proposed landscaping regulations would apply to some recently completed projects within the city was reviewed. Item 2 was an update and discussion on the comp plan update with Civitec. There was no discussion on the comp plan update at this meeting, and item 3 was adjournment. It was a motion by Furkey, second by Burkhardt, to adjourn, and that motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 5:57 PM. We'll take this separately, I guess. Item 13. So Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that report?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Get a motion by Furkey and a second by Zerflu. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? See no further, see no request to speak. Motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 14 is a report of the Planning Commission meeting on December 11th. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on December 11th, 2017, in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhardt, Joe Terry, Fran, Aaron, Lee Tao, and Alderperson Todd Furkey. Member absent was Tim Burkhauser. Others in attendance including, included Adam Taggann and Alderperson Scott Kellogg. Meeting was called order at 4:00 PM. Item 1 is approval of the reports from the November 6th, November 20th Planning Commission meetings. There was a motion and a second to approve the reports, and that motion carried. Item 2 is maps and plaits received. Item A was Thomas Weir. CSM, the applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval for the combination of two parcels into one new parcel and dedication of property as public road right-of-way. The subject properties are located at 211 Two Mile Avenue and 3541 Second Street South. There was a motion and a second to approve that CSM, and that motion carried. Item 3 is action on Plan 170924, Community Development Department, zoning code amendments related to sale of produce as a temporary use. This item was postponed at the November 6th, 2017 meeting. A memo was presented by Adam Taggann regarding possible modifications to the zoning ordinance to allow agricultural products, produce sales on residentially-zoned property by permit and with limitations. There was a motion and a second to approve the zoning code amendment related to the sale of the property, related to the sale of agricultural produce in residential areas, and that motion failed. Zero ayes and six nays. Item 4 was public hearing on Plan 171010, Spire's Review Hospital. The applicant did request that that item be postponed, and so that public hearing was postponed for the regularly scheduled meeting on January 8th, as well as item 5. There was a motion and a second to postpone the public hearing and action on that plan until 4:00 PM Monday, January 8th, and that motion carried unanimously. Item 6 was adjournment. There was a motion by Burkhardt, second by Aaron, to adjourn, and that motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 4:25 PM. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that report?
I'll make a motion to approve, withholding item 3 for discussion.
We have a motion to approve by Zerflu, with the exception of item number 3 on the report. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. We'll go into discussion. Are there any requests to speak on any of the items, with the exception of item number 3? See, oh, sorry. We're going to rescind, okay. Kellogg?
I have a concern with regard to Spire's Hospital. It's in my district, and letters were sent out to the people that might be affected, but it was 100 feet from the border of that area, and that's by law, I believe, we have to send it out 100 feet. 100 feet would be one home or two homes, and in this community, which is my district, they've had concern in the past with Riverview Hospital when they added a parking lot, and they wanted to make sure the parking lot had berms and was attractive, because it affects the value of the property. But because notice was sent out only 100 feet, I went door-to-door and gave notice to everybody who might be interested, because I think it's a due process. And I would hope that maybe before the January meeting, we could send out a notice of the meeting further than that amount, maybe in the ward. There might be people showing up, but people have to hear what they have to say. And what they want to do is change the zoning, but from my understanding, we didn't know what there was changing the zoning to. And it could be a parking pavilion, it could be in addition to the hospital, but to change the zoning and then later on find out what it's going to be was the concern of my neighbors. So I would like to suggest that when this, when they do have the meeting, just the due process, have more people become involved if they choose to become involved. And I request that we send a notice for that ward so that they have that opportunity.
Thank you. I guess as a quick point of clarification, the request was to add additional properties to the planned unit development, so they were amending it, so there was no change of zoning, to my knowledge, that was being requested. I don't know, Adam, did you have any other comment on that or the request from Alder Person Kellogg?
I guess my only concern with that is, the reason we follow the 100-foot rule is so it's consistent from case to case. We're not picking and choosing an arbitrary number. My concern with bearing from that is if I pick a number of 300 feet and someone is 301 foot away, I'm going to get the same concern, and there's no reason why I picked 300 feet for that notice. Again, that's why we go with the 100-foot notice, because that's what state law requires. It's consistent. Every single case gets that same treatment. We don't pick and choose. So that's, just putting that out there. I would note that we are going to be sending out an additional letter, because I have been in contact with the hospital based on the concerns from the neighbors. So the hospital is offering to basically host an informational session prior to that meeting, so that neighbors can be invited to that. So I will be sending that out to that same mailing list and in contact with the people that have called me directly on that.
Well, then I can pass out the rest of them, as I did last time, because I just think neighbors should know.
And I think an open house would be a good thing, since there's a lot of construction activity coming to that property over the next 18 months. Okay. Any other requests to speak on that report, with the exception of item number three? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays.
That leaves item number three, which is action on the Community Development Department item related to the sale of produce. Alder persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to approve that item.
A motion to approve by Zerflu? Do you want to clarify that, because the, it was a...
Yes, I guess I'm going to wonder what we're approving. There was no, was the ordinance prepared for the council, or?
I guess I'm just, I made a motion to approve the motion failing, actually, from the, as it's worded, so.
Sorry, yeah, they held out.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I just wanted it held out for discussion.
Oh, okay.
So the motion is to approve the action taken by the Planning Commission?
Yes.
That's your motion?
Because I learned my lesson a couple of months ago.
So we have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by HEP. Now we'll move into discussion.
Well, it would be the motion to actually approve the request, is the affirmative motion. Otherwise, you're approving, moving to approve a denial, which is a negative motion. But I think, as long as everyone understands what the vote is, you are supportive of denying the motion.
So now, for future reference, again, we have one item a lot of times in these reports, and we want them held out for discussion potentially. So, I mean, it seems to me that's the logical thing to do, but maybe the way I worded the motion wasn't logical. Yeah.
All right, we're just going to go into discussion on that. Yeah, all right. So the floor is, the floor is still yours if you...
Yes, I'm actually going to yield time to Mike, I forget your last name. He's from District 6, that's the reason this whole thing kind of came up. So I just want to give him an opportunity to...
Mike, come to the podium, and I think you know the drill there, make sure the microphone is on.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Mike Arnold. The reason I'm here tonight is I've attempted to attend two Planning Commission meetings in regards to the produce sales being allowed in residential neighborhoods, as opposed to commercial. The first meeting I attended was the November 6 meeting, really to introduce it and attempt to add an exception to the exception list. It was a simple exception, basically allowing produce sales by a resident in the City of Wisconsin Rapids that the said resident had grown. Unfortunately, excuse me, unfortunately, that motion had died at the table, so it moved on to the December 11 meeting, I believe it was. I was not able to attend that meeting, so I couldn't voice anything due to childcare. Adam had written up a completely new amendment, if you would, to the temporary uses chapter. It was 11.14, Section 9, and it was pretty well-versed. I did not, like I said, attend the meeting, so I'm not sure on the outcome. I guess it failed at that meeting, so it's now moved on to the council. And I guess what I'd really like to see happen is allow produce sales from a residence. My children and I grow pumpkins and sell pumpkins three weeks a year. We don't use the money as income. The money is solely designated for charitable donation, as well as a couple-day trip to the Dells, just, you know, as kind of a reward for the kids. I come from a longstanding farming family. It's in my blood. I want my kids to have it in their blood. It teaches a lot of things. It teaches respect. It teaches patience and just how to overall work. And if I'm not able to sell pumpkins in the city, unfortunately, that's a produce item that we would no longer grow. So I guess I would like the council to possibly review this as a potential to allow city residents to sell produce from their home. One of the concerns that was voiced to me was the concern of commercial use at residential property. However, I don't feel that that's truly going to be an issue with Adam's most recent written amendment. It's pretty well-regulated. Again, there's no permissible way at this moment for me to sell pumpkins at my residence. With this amendment, it would then allow permits to be issued at the discretion of the Community Development Office. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Any questions from anybody?
We had a motion to, you rescinded your motion, correct, so we're just on discussion.
I effectively rescinded it.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Any questions from anybody on the council?
All right, see no further requests. Alder Person HEP, you're next.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering what we're going to vote on now, or aren't we? Or can this go, come back, I mean, or not, or what? I guess I don't know what's...
Sue, will you clarify the situation going forward on this?
Well, what I would suggest is, is a motion to approve this, which is, would be an affirmative motion. However, we don't have anything in front of us to approve, whether it's an ordinance or, right? I don't think it was part of the packet or anything, so...
So it would be new business?
So, but...
So would it be new business or referral?
Well, unless you wanted to deny the concept, I guess, if someone, you know, if you didn't want to advance it, then you could just vote to, well, not, I guess, I'm not sure what the, what the application exactly said and what, what they were, I'm assuming the Planning Commission was actually voting on an ordinance amendment that you had put together. Is that correct?
Correct. The Planning Commission was provided with draft language, and then a draft ordinance was before the Planning Commission. Their motion, since it failed, that's why the ordinance did not move on to and be included as part of the council packet. However, there is a draft ordinance that exists.
I guess if you are interested in voting on that ordinance and seeing that, then that would need to come back to the council. Otherwise, if you do not want to entertain this in any fashion, no matter what the ordinance says, that could be disposed of tonight. So I guess someone's going to need to decide which, to make a motion one way or the other.
Alder Person Furkey, you're next.
So, so at the Planning Commission, we discussed this at length. The Planning Commission did not have a problem with city residents selling produce grown at their residence or outside their residence, but not the sale, the sale of their, of the produce in residential area. You and your family have, we discussed ample opportunities to sell the produce in commercial areas or at the farmer's market. The problem at the Planning Commission was the congestion and the safety factors of anyone selling produce at whatever residence. This particular residence was on Baker Drive, somewhat of a heavier-traveled area. Mr. Arnold talks about a three-week window selling pumpkins, but in reality, there's many different crops that can be sold throughout the year, whether it's, you know, even, my neighbor sells gladiolus, and, you know, those are pretty much all through the summer. Other produce has different seasons, so limiting it, limiting it to a three-week window in this one case seemed to be quite a nightmare for, I think, for the Planning Commission and probably for the Community Development, too, because then it basically throws it back in his lap. And I think the overall feeling of the Planning Commission was, we have many different areas for produce to be sold within the city, and we didn't feel the selling produce from a residence was the safest thing to do.
Thank you. Alder Person Coth, you're next.
So because there's no ordinance on the table tonight, this, this has to, as you said, Sue, come back in some way?
Well, I guess what I'd suggest is you either, someone makes a motion to bring, to bring an ordinance back to the council to consider at a later time, which would mean you're inclined to at least consider it, which would be an affirmative motion. And then if that doesn't get enough votes, then you're, you're denying that it coming back, and you're essentially killing it, and, and that would dispose of it tonight. So, yeah, there's really nothing you can approve tonight, because we don't actually have the ordinance in front of us, and it would need to come back. But you can effectively kill it tonight by, by not voting to bring it back again. I guess, does everyone kind of understand what I'm saying there?
I'll make a motion for an ordinance to come back before the council?
So essentially, you're making a referral? Or...
Right, and actually, there is one that was before the Planning Commission. It's just that it's not before you right now, so, right. And I don't think you want it, unless you want it to go back to planning again, but they've already decided, so I would think you'd want it to come right, right to council, right?
So do we want to accept that as a motion, then? Is that cleanness?
I think so.
Okay, motions, we've got a motion by Coth to have this item appear in ordinance form at the January council meeting, I would assume.
Yes.
And is there a second? Sorry, I see, yep, Zerflu. Move into discussion. Kubasak, you're first.
Thank you. I guess procedurally, I, I'm still kind of confused where we're at right now, because as far as the Plan Commission went, and maybe, Adam, you could answer this, was it a case where a conditional use was sought, and then because there isn't a conditional use ability to be sought in a residential area, because there isn't any language that way, then that's when a draft ordinance was presented to the Plan Commission, and then they turn that down? Is that the case?
Well, I was approached by Mike, because he was basically notified he could not sell pumpkins, because there was nothing that allowed it in the ordinance. So we talked about a couple of alternatives. He had contacted a couple of aldermen, and the aldermen suggested that we pursue a text amendment. So the request that was before the Planning Commission was an amendment to the zoning code, basically, to allow the sale of pumpkins in residential districts. In its first iteration, it was basically a, just an exemption was proposed that was looked upon unfavorably by the commission. They wanted something with restrictions, so it was tabled for a month. So then it came back. Last month, I presented an amended version of the request, still a text amendment to the zoning code that tightened it up, that basically treated it as a permit, and that was the request that was recommended, or the motion was made to approve it, but that failed, so effectively denying that request. So that was the request that is before you today. What Sue is saying is because there's not an ordinance, that's why the ordinance would need to be brought back.
Well, okay, then, Sue, this is a good question for you. Technically, the Plan Commission is a quasi-judicial body. They can't approve an ordinance change, right? So were the legislative body, technically, they would say, well, if there was a conditional use ability, then they would say yea or nay, and then since there isn't anything at all, it, a revised ordinance probably shouldn't have went in front of Plan Committee to vote in the first place. It should have been brought forth by an Alder Person here.
No, Plan Commission does, does review all zoning ordinance changes, so that was proper to start with them. And, so Planning has the first review of it, and even though it failed, I mean, it, it's not necessary that it has to be a favorable recommendation to, to you. So, you know, that's why it's still technically alive before you, and so unfortunately, the ordinance is not before you. So, so we really need to either have the ordinance brought back, but if you defeat that motion to bring it back, then that'll effectively, you know, kill it.
If we, with, with your opinion, if we don't take action, we held it out, if no action is taken, then it technically, is that a failure, then?
Well, right, then you're not, you're not, yes, I guess by your not deciding to take up an amendment to the ordinance, then that is what you're doing also, yes.
Alder Person Kellogg, you're next.
I had a concern. I appreciate the wanting to sell pumpkins at a residential location, but I just believe that's why we have the farmer's market. And once you open up this, you open up Pandora's Box, what they'll be selling produce in front of homes, and why do people sell produce at the farmer's market? They could do it in front of their home. And so, I mean, I think that's the concept of the farmer's market. And I attended that meeting, and I'm not in the... that meeting and I'm not in the committee or commission, but that was one of the concerns I have because I can see it popping up in many of our districts. And then how do you enforce it? I mean, Adam's department is limited and running around enforcing that would be just a nightmare. So I, I just want to express my concern that I had at the meeting itself.
Alderperson Coth, you're next.
I under, I understand we have planning and zoning for reasons. You don't want to have certain things in areas where they don't belong because it does create a public safety issue. But I guess the way I'm looking at this issue is, if you have a person selling pumpkins out in front of their house, what's the difference between somebody having a garage sale in front of their house on a busy street? I know there's a residence that I've passed on Seventeenth Avenue, which is a high-traffic area, that they seem to have a year-round garage sale out there. There's also people that sell Tupperware out of their homes for bake sales or whatever. I do understand the concept of the farmer's market, but I also believe that there's a fee or they take a percentage of your earnings. I'm not entirely sure, but there, you have to register to go to the farmer's market and get a square there. There's no grouped area for people to go to a parking lot and have a garage sale and enter their stuff there. I live fairly close to where this gentleman was selling pumpkins. I passed it numerous times. I've, I understand Baker Drive is a high-traffic area. I've never seen any collisions or major accidents at that intersection in particular. I've never saw any more than three or four vehicles at his house prior, when the pumpkins were there, people picking them up. I think we need to help people that want to do something to make money for their family and find a way to help them other than hindering them, whether if it's them having a garage sale, selling walk-in products out of their homes, Tupperware, Mary Kay, or pumpkins. I, I understand that there might be challenges for planning to regulate all this, but then again, we have a whole book of ordinances and we have a difficult time enforcing a lot of those as it is. You can't catch everything. But just because you can't catch everything, I don't think you should begrudge a citizen the opportunity to try to earn a little bit of extra money for their family.
Thank you. Are there any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak. We do have a motion on the floor. Paul, do you want to read back the motion as you've got it?
The motion on the floor is that item number three of the December 11th Planning Commission report would appear as an ordinance before the common council at the January meeting.
Okay. We'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. All right. Item fifteen, standing council committee reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting. Alderperson Zerflu, the floor is yours.
Finance and Property Committee meeting met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 5th in the first floor conference room at the City Hall. All members were present. A list of others attending is on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 5:11 PM. Item number two, presentation by North Point Development Corporation on a proposed senior housing development on city parking lot property near the Centralia Center and an overview of requested city involvement in the project. There was a presentation by North Point Development Corporation as stated above. Item three, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. There was a motion, a second, to go into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes. A roll call vote was taken. Motion carried unanimously. Sub A, in closed session, the committee discussed negotiations and strategy regarding to propose sale of a portion of Centralia Center parking lot property to and a proposed development agreement with North Point Development Corporation for a senior housing development. There was a motion and a second to return to open session. Roll call vote was taken. Motion carried unanimously. Sub B, the committee will return to open session and may take action or make recommendations regarding the sale of a portion of Centralia Center parking lot to North Point Development Corp. and a development agreement with the same. In open session, it was moved by Zerflu, seconded by Dolan, to accept the offer to purchase vacant land, conditional upon a developer's agreement, which will include but not be limited to shared parking agreements, driveway access, developer's fee, and minimum increment. The offer shall not include the city land intended to support YMCA Boys and Girls Club developments. That motion carried unanimously. Item four, there was a motion, a second, to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned at 6:38 PM and there will be a second report. But I will first move for the adoption of this report.
Motion to approve by Zerflu, a second by Hep. Any requests to speak? See no requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
And then the report of the Finance and Property Committee from December 12, 2017. The committee met at 5:00 PM on December 12, 2017, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Committee members Zerflu and Dolan were present. Greg Hep was excused. A list of other, others present is on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, consider a request for permission to apply for a site assessment grant through the Wisconsin Development Corporation on behalf of the Southwood County YMCA to support redevelopment of the Rapids Mall. There was a motion, a second, to approve a request for permission to apply for a site assessment grant through the Wisconsin Development Corporation on behalf of the Southwood County YMCA to support redevelopment of the Rapids Mall. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve check number six nine nine five five through seven zero three six one and manual checks nine nine four nine two through nine nine five zero nine. That motion carried unanimously. Item four, review and consider for approval beverage operator license applications. There was a motion, a second, to approve the beverage operator license applications as presented. The following beverage operator licenses were approved. Trent Williams and Justin Dawson for new applications. There were no renewals. That motion carried unanimously. Item five, set next meeting date. The next Finance Property Committee meeting will be on January 9th at 5:00 PM. Item number six, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. There was a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried. Sub A, in closed session, the committee will discuss a request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated to lease space in the Centralia Center, which was discussed in closed session. Item seven was adjournment. Motion, a second, to adjourn, which carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 5:30 PM. I'll make a motion for the adoption of this report.
Motion to approve by Zerflu and a second by Dolan. Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item number fifteen, C, the Public Works Committee meeting held December 5th. Alderperson Rayom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February, December 5th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present except for Alderperson Coth, who was excused. A list of all, all others attending is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, review the DPW report. The DPW report was reviewed. Item two, update on scope of wastewater west side lift station and river crossing project design and engineering estimates. We reviewed the engineering estimates as follows. The lift station, $2,300,000. The river crossing is $5,000,000, estimated $5,368,000. An optional, optional I added to is a reline in the existing, existing river crossing, $650,000. Item three, review request by Wood County to consider configuring the first parallel parking space on the north side of Grand Avenue, west of Second Avenue South as a taxi stand. It's moved by Rayom and seconded by Kellogg to approve the request by Wood County to configure the first parallel parking space on the north side of Grand Avenue West of Second Avenue South as a taxi stand. The motion carried unanimously. Item four, consider request from Howe School to restrict left-turn lanes at Prospect and Eighth Street North with a sign that reads, no left turn 8:00 AM to 8:45 AM and 3:15 PM to 4:00 PM on school days. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Rayom to approve request from Howe School to restrict left-turn lanes at Prospect Street and Eighth Street North with a sign that reads, no left turn 8:00 AM to 8:45 AM and 3:15 PM to 4:00 PM on school days. The motion carried unanimously. Item five was review of the referral list. Item twenty-eight could be removed, was removed. Item six was adjourned. There was motion by Kellogg, seconded by Rayom to adjourn. The motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 7:10 PM. And that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion to approve by Rayom. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
And the Public Works Committee meeting held December 19th.
We met this evening. Public Works Committee met at 5:45 PM on Tuesday, December 19th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. The list of all others attending the meeting is on file in the clerk's office. Item number one, consider approval of the preliminary, of a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments under municipal police power pursuant to statute six six point zero seven zero one and six six point zero seven zero three for dredging of Quinell Creek impoundment bordered by the following roadways, First Street North, Shoreward Terrace, Pleasant View Drive, and Ash Street. It was moved and seconded to approve of a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments under municipal police power pursuant to statute six six point zero seven one and six six point zero seven zero three for dredging of Quinell Creek bordered by, impoundment, bordered by the following roadways, First Street North, Shoreward Terrace, Pleasant View Drive, and Ash Street. Motion carried unanimously. Item two was adjourned. There was motion, a second, to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned at 5:50 PM. And that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion to approve by Rayom. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. And then are there any requests to speak? The ordinance is in your packets behind the placeholder sheet, I guess. It's also in your Google Docs as well. All right. See no requests to speak. Please cast your ballots. Move on to item number fifteen, E. The report of the Human Resources Committee meeting held on December 5th. And F, the Human Resources Committee meeting held on December 19th. Alderperson Furkey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Sue Schill, Debbie Nash, and Paul Shabelsky. The meeting was called to order at 4:02. Item number two was consider elected official salaries for the terms beginning in April and May of 2018. Those elected officials would be the mayor, city clerk, city attorney, and city alderman. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to increase the salary of the position of mayor by $2,500 after the cost of living adjustment for January 1st, 2018, for the term beginning in April, 2018. That motion carried two ayes and one nay, with Kubasak voting in the negative. It was moved by Furkey to increase the salary of the position of the city attorney by $6,500 for the term beginning in May, 2018. That motion died for lack of a second. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Furkey to increase the salary of the position of the city attorney by $4,000 after the cost of living adjustment for January 1st, 2018, for the term beginning in May, 2018. That motion carried two ayes and one nay, with Kubasak voting in the negative. The salaries of the city clerk and alderpersons will remain the same, with the city clerk receiving the normal cost of living adjustments given to the other non-union employees per city policy. Item number three, consider extending the part-time human resource specialist position through January 31st, 2018. The committee previously limited this position to December 31st, 2017. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Furkey to extend the part-time human resource specialist position through January 31st, 2018. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, A, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight five, para one, para E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses, business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg, by Kubasak to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight five, para one, para E of the Wisconsin statutes. A roll call vote was taken. Motion carried unanimously. Item B, in closed session, the committee will discuss negotiating strategy regarding successor labor agreements with the International Association of Firefighters Local 425, Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association, and the AFSCME Local 1075. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiation strategy regarding successor labor agreements with the International Association of Firefighters Local 425, Wisconsin Rapids Police, Professional Police Association, and AFSCME Local 1075. Item C, the committee may return to open session to take action on the approval of successor labor agreements with the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association and the AFSCME Local 1075. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to return to open session. That motion carried unanimously. In open session, it was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to approve the proposal for an agreement with the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association as presented, which would be a one-year contract with an increase in wages of 2 percent, changes to the detective schedule, and other minor language cleanup. That motion carried unanimously. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to approve the tenor- It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to approve the tentative agreement with the AFSCME Local 1075, the DPW, which provides for a 1.84% increase in base wages for a one-year agreement commencing January 1, 2018. That motion carried unanimously. Item number five was adjournment. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kubasak to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 5:09 PM. With this, I would make a motion to approve the Human Resources Committee report, holding out item 4C.
A motion to approve by Furkey, seconded by Kellogg, with the exception of 4C. Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 4C on that report. Alder Person Furkey, we'll go to you.
Thank you. In reference to item 4C, our agreement, potential agreement that we had with the City Professional Police Association was rejected. With further negotiation, $75 additional shoe allowance was agreed upon. So I would like to make an amended motion to approve the contract with the Professional Police Association with an addition of an additional $75 shoe allowance per officer and keep the balance of 4C intact.
All right. We've got a motion by Furkey. Is there a second? Second by Dolan. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Kubasak, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. procedurally, is this something where we would actually, we're holding this out and we would fail this motion because then the next Human Resources report that we have on the agenda is to actually approve what we just discussed at the Human Resources Committee meeting we had earlier?
No, actually, the meeting tonight was about the non-union increases of, that's the December 19 meeting. So this was tentatively disposed of at the December 5 HR meeting, both the AFSCME contract and the Police Association contract. However, that, as agreed to by HR committee, that did not include the shoe allowance. They want the shoe allowance. It's $75. And so then the recommendation from staff and, as Alder Person Furkey stated, would be to change our proposal to them to include the additional $75. So that wasn't something that we discussed tonight. Tonight was just the, was the non-union increase.
Okay.
For non-union employees. Yep.
All right. Are there any further requests to speak?
And the actual contract proposal is on your desk, I believe, the entire agreement. I'm sorry. The entire agreement is on your desk with the change of the additional $75.
All right. See no further requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. That leaves item 15F, the report of the Human Resource Committee meeting held December 19.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met tonight at 5:30 December, Tuesday, December 19, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Sue Schill, Joe Terry, Randy Johns, Julie Berger, Alder Person Rayom, and Joe Ixted. The meeting was called to order at 5:31. Item number two was to consider approval of a general wage increase for non-union employees effective January 1, 2018. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Furkey to approve a general wage increase of 2% for non-union employees effective January 1, 2018. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three was adjournment. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to adjourn. That motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:36 PM. With this, I would, with that, I would like approval for the Human Resources Committee meeting of December 19.
A motion and a second on the floor, on the motion. Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 16, miscellaneous reports. Item one, the Southwood County Airport Commission meeting held November 21. Number two, the Police and Fire Commission meeting held on November 8. Item three, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly update for November. Item four, the Park and Rec Commission meeting held on December 6. Item five, the Water Works and Lighting Commission meetings held on October 11, the 23rd, November 8, and November 15. And item six, the Housing Authority meetings held on October 31 and November 29. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
We have a motion by Coth, second by Kubasak. Are there any requests to speak? Sorry, I'm jumping the gun. Okay. Any requests to speak on the reports? Seeing no requests. Oh, Joe?
Just real briefly, I noticed on the Water Works and Lighting report, there was a motion to approve the sale of some commission-owned property. Just as a point of order, I'm just questioning if that's appropriate, if the commission's actually owned property, if that's city-owned property, it wouldn't need to be reviewed by the city council. It's just a question.
Sue, do you want to address that? Now, we've talked about it, but...
There's some mild disagreement, I guess, on that in terms of the authority of the Water and Light Commission to buy and sell property on their own and whether that's been delegated to them. It's clear that they cannot hold property in their own name, which is something that, with the few recent purchases which they had done and they have now or are in the process of changing those back to the city, but that's something that we're discussing with them and we can update the council on, you know, what, if anything, that I feel that the council needs to do something or get their opinion on how they want to proceed. But to this point, they have not, in the recent past at least, they have not, we have not been approving any of their sales or purchases, but it's something that has been noticed and we're beginning to talk to them about that, so.
Are there any further requests to speak? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 17, referral of communications to committees. Are there any referrals? Alder Person Coth, you're first.
Okay, I got a couple referrals here. The first one is for the Property and Finance Committee regarding City Ordinance 25.17, which is our city ordinance regarding possession of drug paraphernalia. Currently, it is an offense which carries a municipal citation of $500. I think a lot of people in the community wanted us to start cracking down on drugs, so I'd like to make a referral to review chapter 25.17 to change the offense to a $1,500 misdemeanor fine and also add language to chapter 25 for misdemeanor THC possession offenses and make that a $1,500 fine as well. Most of the time, when these people are given a municipal citation at the amount of $500, if they do not pay that municipal citation, they're sent to jail. Municipal judge will often give them a chance to make a payment plan on that. If they fail to make the payment plan, they are allowed to sit off the citation at the rate of $100 per day in jail, so a $500 citation can be sat off in the county jail for five days. I think raising it to a $1,500 penalty and making the potential for not paying it 15 days in the county jail could deter a lot of our drug paraphernalia and misdemeanor drug possession charges. The other thing I would like to do is, I know previously when we were discussing the chair of the mayor that was tabled till April, I see that we are generating interest for a committee of the whole meeting coming up in January. I would like to ask that the chair of the mayor be discussed at that committee of the whole meeting so we can maybe put the item to bed sooner rather than later.
Alder Person Dolan is next.
Yeah, I was just checking the referral list. I'd like to refer to Tom's Committee, Public Works. I thought it was on there, but I didn't see it. Stop signs for Rosewood at 14th place and 15th place. I'd like him to at least take a look at it. So I'm officially doing that. If anybody's watching, I see he's got it, but I didn't see it on the referral list, so...
All right, thank you. Alder Person...
The emails must have got lost, but I ain't going to say a word of this.
Alder Person Kubasak.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a specific referral, but I do have a question about the content that we're going to have at that proposed committee of the whole meeting. In an email that I sent back to Paul, if we're going to have a committee of the whole and we're going to be looking at all the zoning suggestions, changes, and everything, we probably want to start at noon, not 6:00 PM. I would assume that Adam would be able to clarify how long it might kind of take, but it might be a meeting that we probably don't want to discuss anything else. I don't want to remove anything from Mr. Coth's suggestion, but it's going to be a very intensive meeting, I think.
If I can answer that, yeah. The goal is to review the zoning code in whole. That doesn't mean necessarily that it's a page-by-page review of a 250-page document. The consultant is working on finalizing the draft that has been recommended by the planning commission up to this point, and then there would be a summary memo basically that goes through and highlights some of the major changes, which would probably drive the conversation. How long that'll take, that's obviously up to the council and the commission, who would also be present at that meeting, but based on the 18 months of work up to this point, I guess it would be surprising if it was a short meeting.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Alder Person...
That's the night before council. There isn't any intent to do anything at the council meeting with that, is there?
Correct. There is no intention that it would be...
Okay, yeah, because as long as you guys have been working on it, I would hope that, even if it was six or eight hours that we met the night before, that we'd need time, more time than that to go through it in our minds after that even to get it straight, so...
Sorry.
You know, just to make sure we get, whatever.
Yep. No, the intention would be then if there are any major concerns or issues, that that would go back to the consultant, who would then make those changes prior to it going before, for its formal public hearing before the commission, and it would only be after a public hearing at the commission that it would return to the council for action. So it would be at least a month, if not more, of delay.
Let's see. Alder Persons Zurfluh, you're next.
I think actually first goes first and then next is second.
Oh, sorry.
I took every...
So nobody else can make referrals.
I can't move around like Wheel of Fortune or something.
Was, oh, you actually had something.
Just, I just want to point a clarification. The April ballots are going to have a referendum for mayoral term because I seem to remember that being a referral last month, and if not, I would like to officially make that referral. I think that should happen.
I can examine the timeline, but I highly doubt we can get that done in this timeframe. And the referral was to, the original referral, which was, I believe, was voted on at a special council meeting, was to just table the mayoral term length item until March. And I have that, those special council meeting minutes were approved. I'm not sure what the procedure is.
That's accurate. What you said is accurate, but then Alder Person Kellogg followed up with the referendum question. That's why, so, if it can't happen, it can't happen. I just wanted to know if it...
Yeah, I mean, I can contact the county clerk tomorrow because I'm unfamiliar...
Because I thought that was actually, all right.
Okay, I think Kellogg, or Furkey, one of you two had something up there. All right.
So I just, I'm well aware that a lot of the discussions as far as the funding of the regional aquatic center is done behind scenes, but I guess I would like some update, if not in January, perhaps in February, because we do, we do need to keep this at the forefront as far as having somewhat of a drop-dead date. Whatever money is promised or committed to really is going to dictate the scope of the facility. So I certainly do not want a shovel not going in the ground in 2018. So I guess looking for some type of update, again, if not January, February.
And actually, we may be able to get a memo out in the next week because we're meeting with MSA tomorrow morning on some details related to the design, the construction document preparation, so we can probably get you an interim communication out, but yeah, certainly can have something in terms of a fundraising update at a future meeting. Other referral of communication to committees, seeing no further, oh, Alder Person, yeah, sorry, they cleared everybody off there.
Referral to Public Works driveway variance, so, on Lincoln Street.
All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Coth, second by Kubasak. Call in favor? Aye. Merry Christmas to everybody. Good evening.